Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, May 9th, meeting. Could you please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge of Allegiance.
allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First, on the general reorganization of the board. Make a motion for chairman.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to make Kathy the new chair.
Okay. There's a motion, there's a second.
I'll second that.
In a second.
Purposes of discussion.
All in favor, Kathy, chairman?
Oh, discussion?
Oh, discussion? Go ahead. You have something?
I do. There's a couple of reasons why I wanted to nominate Kathy for the position of chair. The biggest reason, besides moving into a rotating chair, which has been discussed, which is one of the biggest reasons why I nominated you last year, is because right now we're heading into a situation with the school, renewal of the regional agreement, and discussions of the budget. Her experience and tenacity that she's established previously with the school committee, the finance committee, and the current investigation into the formulas, I think would benefit the town greatly if she was the chair and headed up that as well.
Okay.
Give her a little bit more edge and bite into this. And I think it would be a huge benefit to the town.
Okay. Anybody else in the discussion? None. All in favor, Kathy? Opposed? Three, two in favor, three opposed. Motion fails. Is there another nomination?
Mr. Chair, I nominate Ed Watson for chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Is there a motion? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, discussion. None. All in favor? Oh, Kathy, you had a comment?
Yes, I think it's very clear that this is just a setup here, that we're making the same person chairman again, just so that you don't give me a chance to be chairman. I know I would be fair, I know I would let all opinions be heard, and I think this sets a very bad precedent for the Board of Selectmen, which is why I'm going to personally vote against this. I normally would vote for somebody else being chair, but this, what's going on tonight, is not okay, and citizens of this town should be concerned.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'd like to respond, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Last year, something happened that was unprecedented, and Kathy and Bill O'Neill tried to remove the chairman midterm, okay? If we're going to get along civilly, that should never happen. It's unprecedented, and I'm not going to reward you for it, Kathy. We don't need division on this board. It's procedural position, it's not a power position, and that's how I see it. So I don't, I think we need some stability at this point in time, we need some continuity. I think Ed did an outstanding job. I think he was badgered and belittled last year, and I think that Ed did a great job, an exceptional job. I'm proud of my chairman, Ed Watson, and I want to give him another shot at it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Kathy, go ahead.
Yes, I'm going to respond to the, by speaking to the townspeople of Groveland. Ed chaired for the year. Yes, there was a moment when we thought that perhaps that wasn't the best idea, but that did not pass. I will say personally that I have had the gavel almost hit on me by the chair, I have been called names by members of this board at the other end of the table, and that I know as chairman, I would never allow that to happen during my meetings. I would allow people to have the appropriate amount of time to speak civilly. All that I've seen during the last few meetings has been a lack of civility, name-calling. We need to build bridges within our departments, within our schools, and within our community. And I just don't think that the current chairman will do that. Perhaps he'll try, but I don't know. I'll have to wait and see, I guess, because obviously this vote was decided before I got to this meeting.
Anybody else? All in favor? Opposed? Three in favor? Two opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. I have a nomination for vice chairman.
I'll nominate Jason for vice chairman.
I'm sorry, who, who?
Jason.
Jason. Nomination for Jason, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I've had the opportunity to get to know Jason through my work on this board. He is honest and trustworthy and carries his sense of integrity into every endeavor. We've worked together on union contracts, which were difficult, worked together on policies, and I think he is a great addition to this board and will be a fantastic vice chairman.
Okay. Anybody else? All in favor of Jason, vice chairman? Two in favor? Three in favor? Opposed? Two. Motion carries. Three in favor, two opposed. Jason will be the vice chairman.
Do you have seats?
Public comment? We had none.
We have to reseat.
Unnecessary.
Oh, yeah. I'm going to be out of spite for my own shot.
No public comment. Approval of warrants. Jason, do you have those?
I do. I'll make a motion to approve payroll warrant 2245. In the amount of $180,960.
Is there a second?
A second.
A second. Any discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous. Bill Warren.
I'll make a, a motion to approve bill warrant 2245 in the amount of $1,377,718.82, which breaks down to the town of $44,371,17. Water and sewer, $15,586. Payroll withholding, $36,192.9. Light bills, $150,207.40. Grants and revolving, $113,609.83. And Penticott assessment, $1,017,752.33.
Any discussion? No. Was there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, okay. No further discussion. All in favor? Unanimous. Approval of minutes of April 25th.
I've reviewed the minutes and make a motion for favorable action.
I'll second that.
In a second. Any discussion? None. Dan, you were absent. And Mark, you, you weren't here. All in favor? Three in favor?
Abstention.
Two abstentions. Next, accept the resignation of Jamie Flores from the library board trustees effective February 17, 2022. We have a note from the chairman of the library trustees. Did that affect?
I'll make a motion for favorable action.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Jamie did a good job, she's just unable to devote the time needed.
I have a question as to, why is it backdated?
I'm sorry?
Why is it backdated?
We received the, sorry, Mr. Chair, we received the resignation later on when they submitted a request for an appointment for the rest of the term, so we were not made aware of the resignation until recently.
Okay. That's fine.
All in favor? Resignation unanimous. Approve the town administrator as the signatory for the 22-47 payroll warrant. Rebecca, you want to explain that one?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that is only a one-time situation. The county will be out on vacation, and therefore, in order to have the proper checks and balances, they need to see somebody other than the treasurer or collector reviewing the payroll warrant, and therefore, we are designating just for payroll 22-47 for it to be the town administrator in the absence of the town accountant.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the town administrator as signatory for the 22-47 payroll warrant.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, further discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous. Moving right along. Discussion and possible vote. The upper discussion, first up was the Garden Club request.
Hi.
Afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thank you.
Just identify yourself so that everybody can.
I'm Diane Plantimiera. I'm a member of the Groveland Garden Club Select Board. So thank you for this opportunity to come for you again. I apologize that again, but I thought it was very important that you let me explain what the Garden Club does for this town, so that you understand the full ramifications of what I'm talking about. The Garden Club maintains the historic Little Red Schoolhouse, keeps up, keep up, keeps up the grounds as well. Recently, we had to put $900 into the facial boards because they were all rotten. We planted trees at Shanahan, we planted trees and native plants up at V.C. Park for the town's recreational use. We provide junior gardener programs, we provide garden therapy programs at nursing homes, we offer garden education to members and the community. We have the, given the Girl Scouts an education so that they could get badges. Planting is at, here at the town hall and at the library. These are ongoing things, and as I mentioned last time, we've lost, we lost two fundraisers during the pandemic. We actually, we actually lost three fundraisers, and we continue to have electricity, heat, water, sewer, insurance, comm. ass, filing fees, all of these fees. The total that we lost was over $11,000. I'm not asking for $11,000, we're only asking for the initial $6,000 that we asked for at the, the first time I came before you. We have to have money in the bank in order to continue with our programs, in order to continue to support the citizens of Groveland, and we think we're doing a good job doing that. We continue, you know, our fundraisers have started up again. Please come to our plant sale on May 21st at the Little Red Schoolhouse. The Little Red Schoolhouse is open for you to look at anytime. I think we've done a really good job keeping it up for this town as a historic site. So, again, I'm asking for, the Garden Club is asking for $6,000 for, from the pandemic relief fund, and thank you for the opportunity of addressing you. I hope you can vote on it. Thank you.
Any questions? None? Question? Go ahead.
Yes, I do also remember when you came in that our chairman then asked you, despite being broke, would you please put some plants out front? And you went ahead and did that, and I, I think we didn't reimburse you for that either, did we? So.
We gave it to you.
Yes, you did. Yes, you did. When you didn't have the money to give either way. So, long as I've been in town, Groveland Garden Club has been a cornerstone of the town. Your plant sale is from 9:00 AM till?
Noon.
Noon time? Okay. I'm in favor of this, just to stabilize this important part of our community. It's not just a garden club, they're also maintaining the Little Red Schoolhouse, which is also an iconic fixture in our town, and I'd like to make sure that they don't struggle as much as they've been struggling. I know you've been struggling with membership and with funding, and yet you keep going and you still plant things out front of here even when we haven't addressed your needs. So personally, I'm in favor of this.
Go ahead, Diane.
I think we have a big-ticket item. We were waiting to see how much it would cost, and that's the abatement of the lead in the water pipes over at the Bagnell. So, my position is we need to wait and see before we spend any more funds out of that American recovery money. So, hate to wait, but it's a long time in coming getting rid of the lead out of the water over at the Bagnell.
We can't hear you.
Okay. Dan, can you speak up if you can hear?
Usually, I talk too loudly. We had a prior meeting where we talked about abating the lead paint at the Bagnell Elementary School. It could be an exorbitant price to do that. Would've, should've, could've been done a long time ago, get the lead out of the water at the, at the school. So until we get a price on that, I'm hesitant to spend any more money, because if we come up short, we may not have funds for it. So I think that is number one priority of what we can spend that money on at this point in time after the first responders. I respect the Garden Club, appreciate what you do, but we can't have lead in our drinking water for our children. So, Mr. Chair, my position is that we wait and see.
Okay. Anybody else? Kathy, go ahead.
Yeah, in the interest of collaboration and compromise, and also in the interest of showing some good faith to the Garden Club, is there some amount that the board would consider at this time to help them out, just to put forth some good faith? I do think they've been waiting patiently, and they demonstrated, they gave us the paperwork, they demonstrated they lost revenue, we know it exists. We're just continuing their struggle without showing any good faith. That's my concern. I just, I understand where you're coming from, Dan, because I'm the one that brought up the lead pipe thing, that I want that money there. But a couple thousand dollars might go a long way towards showing the Garden Club that we believe in them and we do want to try to help them if we can.
So you're looking for, almost like a down payment? Initial, initial. Diane, do you, go maybe, go ahead, Dan.
Kathy, you said a couple grand, so is it your possession two grand now and maybe, maybe more later? On a maybe?
I would vote for that, too, yes.
I'll go along with two grand, Mr. Chair.
We would be happy to accept that, you know, with a, hopefully another four later.
Wait and see.
A wait and see for the other four. Thank you. Thank you for that option.
Make a motion for $2,000 from the opera funds to be given to the Groveland Garden Club.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second. Further discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Premium pay. And we have a, a list of the town employees that, and the hours. I know you were working on that. Rebecca, you want to?
Actually, it was not me, Mr. Chair. It was Selectman Neves that has taken the lead on that particular project and doing the research on that, so I, I hand the floor over to him.
All right. Well, we'll hear from Jason.
Yes, I know that we had discussed it, and using the formula that was used for the police department, I made some tweaks just because there was a larger range of number of hours that were worked by individuals. So I just made some adjustments to the bonuses, instead of just leaving it at the 2,000, 1,600, 200, 800, 400, it went down 200 and 100, or nothing if anybody worked less than the minimum that was set back when they looked at the police and fire at 24 hours. The list of employees is not exactly complete, there was some blanks from the hours that I received from the payroll, so it still needs to be tweaked, it's not a, a complete list. And some of the department heads have opted out of the request, just because they, they felt that they're not deserving of it. So there's some blanks that are there, intentionally some that need to be a little bit more investigated. But I wanted the board to take an opportunity to look at it and see what they thought in terms of it being fair, and whether or not they thought that they should, should move forward with investigating it and perhaps making it happen for the employees.
Thank you. A lot of work went into it. Anybody else? Comments?
What's the dollar amount? I'm sorry.
Right now, the dollar amount is 28,200, but I'm expecting it to be slightly higher than that from some of the blanks. So you're probably looking at about 30, 32,000.
You said 22 now, but it could be higher. Is it premature us voting on this?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It's premature?
Yes. This is just more information, so you get an opportunity to look at it.
Yeah.
And it's not complete, because it still needs to be tweaked a little bit in terms of the amounts, whether or not any of the body of the board has any other suggestions.
I do.
Was the formula based on the same timeline as the other?
Yes.
People? Exact same dates?
Exact same dates. I took it right from the other formula. Thank you.
I like the formula that we used for the first responders, and that made sense to me, the first responders, because they went into people's homes at a time when there was no vaccine, and even the protective gear wasn't that widely available. Beyond that, for all the other reasons why we're not releasing more of those funds, I feel that another way of showing appreciation to our town employees, I know myself personally, I worked through the pandemic as a teacher, I worked through it in the hybrid mode at the peak of it, and I know that at every meeting in our auditorium, our administration took the time to thank us for being there and for doing what we were doing, and the parents have also thanked us for being there, and the students have thanked us for being there. And for me, that was enough to be, to know that they realize that we were working under tough situation. I would wonder if, if we're allowed to do anything like an extra personal day and a letter of appreciation for their file or something like that, but to just start handing out bonus checks, I, I don't know, I don't want, I just don't want you to spend too much more time on it unless the rest of the board is on board to do this, because I just don't look at it the same way.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? Jason, anything else to sum it up?
No, I was looking just for guidance from the board.
Okay.
How they felt.
Dan, you got anything?
Well, maybe the next meeting they could come in, I mean, talk, is there anybody here that?
Although, we have heard from water already.
Say again?
We did hear from water already.
Okay. What about the other guys?
Yeah, we could always ask them.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What were the dates? Like, how long? What were the dates?
It was during the.
Declaration of emergency.
Yeah, the declaration of emergency. One full year.
You know, once.
May to?
June.
June.
May.
2020 to June 2021.
Correct.
Does that encompass you?
I think it should if, if we were to do that, but I'm not going to complain.
Well, maybe, maybe that's what Jason had in mind when he said there was something that needed to be tweaked. We schedule, who do you want to come in the next meeting? Dan?
Yeah.
Who do you want to hear from?
Everyone who wasn't here before. I mean, I just, I think the people ought to know who's getting the funds and why, and I may agree with them 100%, but I like to match the faces with the, the requests.
So you want to hear from the department heads?
Well, I don't know.
Like Rennie, Amanda?
Yeah, I mean.
The poll workers?
Well, we had lengthy discussions on, I think we did, a couple of meetings anyways, where I think the rationale was if you were at risk and you came to work, you should be rewarded. And I agree with that. And if you exposed yourself to people that potentially had COVID and could transmit and you came to work, and a lot of people didn't go to work in that period of time, I think the dates were determined on the states of emergency, is that correct? By Governor Baker?
Yes.
Is that precise?
Yes.
So, I mean, if the board doesn't feel it's necessary, then I'll, I'll yield my request, if you think it's a waste of time or if you think it's moot in some way. I think it's already been established that these people qualify, and they were at risk and they should be rewarded. I just, I haven't really thought about it with highway and some of the other requests.
Yeah, I think, and I think a lot of interpretation of risks and stress is personal.
Yeah.
And so it varies from person to person, and depending on their situation, whether or not they have additional risks themselves.
You know, and truth be told, I mean, I learned something, I forget his name, forgive me, but he came before us and he said he had to clean out the filters or something and to talk about a dirty job, but I could see that as a certain exposure. So, I don't know, information's key, and, but I defer to the rest of the board.
Kathy?
Just some, some thoughts. First of all, in the interest of consistency, we did tell the Garden Club that we were not going to entertain any other allocations from these funds until we determined the outcome of the study of the lead in the water at the Bagnell. And then, just, you know, for my personal life and people I know, and my own family who worked throughout the pandemic, who were exposed and still had to go to work, out in the private industry, I don't think they're getting any bonuses just for going to work. I know nurses and doctors did, but that was different. And I'm just concerned that we're, we're saying two different things in the same meeting. We're telling the Garden Club we're not going to consider anything until the lead in the water is determined, and we're putting this back on the next agenda when our biggest problem facing us right now is we have an unbalanced town budget. And I think most, if not all, of our efforts should be channeled towards our annual town meeting and our budget and our town services, and hopefully finding a way to save jobs and not have massive layoffs, whether in the school or in the town. And I just feel that this work can be ongoing, if, if that's what the board wants, but I don't feel that it is the highest priority in front of us at this time.
Do you want to, do you want to put this off the last of the town meeting?
I'd like to table it until we see the output from the study of the lead in, in the Bagnell school, because that's what we said to the Garden Club.
I'll second that, if that's a motion, Kathy.
That's a motion.
Okay, motion to table and a second.
Second.
All in favor of table? All in favor? Opposed? One opposed? Thank you. Next. Penticott School, Groveland Cable TV, propose collaboration. Chris?
Hi.
Do you want to?
Can I just pull up the? One, one second. Just pulling up the.
This is yours. I think I have mine. I do.
Okay, that's part one. This is part two.
If you just, just identify yourself so that everybody could, Ken Holmgren.
Hi, I'm Chris Licori. I'm the director of the Cable Department, Cable TV, public access and government TV. So we have the chance to install a state-of-the-art video production system over at the Penticott High School. We've had a lot of requests to expand the programming that we have on Channel 22, and we're going to be getting a new HD combined government MPEG channel. That's going to need programming. So I started looking into what can we do to expand what we're doing, you know, people, we've had a lot of requests for sports coverage, we've had a lot of requests for school committee, which we started taping this year, and, you know, stuff going on over at the school. So I looked into putting in a new system over at the brand-new high school before they seal the walls up and complete everything, and what it would take to put in. and what it would take to put in PTZ cameras, the same thing we have in this room, over in the gymnasium, in the auditorium theater, and a couple roving ones to do their school committee, because they haven't decided where their school committee is going to meet. That's, I'll get into that later. But we have really one shot to do this before they close the building and they seal the walls, and it'll never be done or looked at again after that point. So, we're kind of under the gun, but we have a lot of unspent money from this year in the PEG. We have about seventy, fifty, sixty grand unspent from this year, because we didn't do a lot because of COVID and all sorts of things. And we have a brand-new fiscal year starting July one. So, my proposal is to take our leftover money from this year, about fifty grand of that, and then a hundred grand from next year from the stabilization account that we have, and not affect our normal budget. We have the money. And then we would have a really, really great system over at the high school to tape all these things, do the basketball games, do the theater, do the school committee, and have that airing on the channels. And so, that's what I'd like to do. There's a lot more that I'll get into, but having looked into that, we don't know a couple of things. We need to identify definitively where our control room would go. We're waiting on the school to sign off on giving us permanent space for that. And because of that, because we don't know where that will be, I don't have a definitive number on the wiring cost. We estimated that at fifteen thousand dollars. That's conservative. That's really high. It'll probably come in lower than that. But until we know where it's going to go from and to, I can't say for certain. But what I've given in front of you is a wiring diagram, a sort of equipment breakout, and the equipment list of what I'm proposing we do. Two sites, the gym, we're going to cover sports, have four cameras in there, do really nice job with, you know, coverage on that, and that's going to go to a central, you know, control room location with a video switcher and be manned and all of that. And then also, we'll put a couple cameras in the auditorium. And the hope is that we can get the school committee to commit to meeting in there. They don't, they don't know yet where they want to be, but that's what I've recommended they do, because that's going to be designed acoustically. It's going to have microphones. It's going to be state-of-the-art. So, that would allow us to cover their meetings a lot better than the current situation, obviously. I don't know if you've ever been to that room. You can't, where they are right now, you can't hear anything. There's a heater going all the time. It's, hopefully, that's going to be improved a lot. So, we'd be putting in a state-of-the-art system for the students, you know, and we would be training them. We would be showing them, and hopefully, there would be a buy-in from them to want to learn and volunteer with us and help us create more programming. One of the concerns from the school is that the kids might not be reliable or want to be part of this, but I think we should do it, and I think we should try. And if, you know, if there isn't a ton of interest, we can still do a lot ourselves and program the channels ourselves. I mean, that's the benefit to us is doing a better job to create programming that's there to be created the right way, and not having to run around and do a million different things every time we want to go over there and do something. So, yeah, I wanted to just see what the board thinks about this and what your guys' thoughts and questions are. I have, I've been working with a very competent individual who helped build the TD Garden and has done a bunch of college and university build-outs, very knowledgeable and knows what he's doing to come up with this plan. And, you know, that's, that's what I have before you.
Any questions for Chris? Jason?
Being that this is all at the high school,
Yeah.
Do you think it should be more of a collaborative effort with Newbury and Merrimack?
Well, it's funny you mention that. I did explore that possibility, because that was originally where I was going. I think they're hesitant to sign on to something until they know something is going to happen. Merrimack wanted to know more of the costs for them before committing. They seemed like they didn't want to be part of this right away, but they'd be open to maybe contributing later after it exists. Wes Newbury, I did try to get meetings set up. We haven't gotten a firm yes or no from them. Their cable chairman is really enthusiastic and on board, but trying to coordinate things with all of the town meeting stuff going on and everything that's going on, the timing is just really, really hard. It was really, really hard to even get this in time before our town meeting, which is how we needed to sort of do that. So, I don't want to say yes, and I don't want to say no. Obviously, the school is in bad shape with the override, so they can't really contribute anything either. But I think that in the future, they would be, you know, we could hold the programming sort of for them if they wanted to buy in. You know, we could give them the sports coverage that we're doing, and they would run it on their channels. So, I think the potential is there for them to sign on and want to be part of this, once they know it's happening.
Kathy?
Yes. So, these fees are collected as part of everybody in Groveland's cable, cable bills. These are your cable bill monies. And we submitted a budget with the last contract that talked about how these fees would be used to enhance services in Groveland. That's what the budget says. So, I feel that this is very rushed. This is certainly taking cable fees out of Groveland and spending them for the benefit of the other two towns, and they're not putting up any of it, and
Well, they wouldn't get the benefits.
I would not support this for that reason, because we submitted a budget, and I know I'd have to go back and look it up. I didn't know this was coming to me tonight. I didn't get this in advance in my packet, so I'm seeing this for the first time now. It's a significant amount of money. It would have to be bid. It would have to be flushed out. This would take, in my opinion, this would take months to really make sure this is what we should do, not days or weeks. If this goes to town meeting now, we're just throwing money around, is my opinion. And I don't think that's what we should be doing when we said, when we did the twenty-year cable thing, and we had the hearings, and we told the residents, we're going to put together a budget, because if we don't need all the money we're taking as a surcharge on their cable bill, then maybe we should lower the surcharge. Okay? This, this is not meant to stockpile money that we can just all of a sudden
Well, we're trying to spend it. I mean, I would like to see that spent. We spent it on other things that weren't cable-related four years ago, and we spent about eighty thousand dollars.
For Groveland. For Groveland.
Right.
Yes. So, I would like to spend some time going through. If we have this amount of money, we know that we have an unbalanced town budget. We don't have much money for anything else in town, so maybe we
You can't tap that for the town budget.
Excuse me, I'm not saying that. You interrupted me.
Sorry.
My thought is that we should take the time to review the, what we put in for the cable budget, what we said we were going to do with the money, and if we have to reevaluate what our goals are and what we want to do, we should do that, but not like this, not like last minute, so we can get it to a town meeting like right now. No. I don't think that's a good way to do decision-making for this type of equipment. It's a lot of money. It's a hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. And just because it's there doesn't mean we should spend it, and I'm not trying to put you down or anything. I know you, you always come in with ideas, and I'm more than willing to take time and look at this idea. But I'm not going to be rushed into it because they're sealing a wall up or something like that. I mean, that, this has to be flushed out and looked at what we thought we were going to do with the money, because I know we put together a budget when we submitted that contract.
Yeah, I mean, we could do a lot of different things. This is just one option. I'm not saying we have to do this at all. I really wanted to present this as, do you even want us to move forward with, with something like this? Do you want to think about it? You know, I'm not saying we have to do it tonight. That is not my position.
Right now, I wouldn't, just because these are the fees from the Groveland ratepayers. And I'd first want to see what we can do in Groveland for folks. I know that there's service has been a problem in town, and there's been all kinds of complaints along those lines. I don't know whether any of this money can help towards that, but I know in the budget, we put together ideas of things that we were going to try to do with it. I'd like us to revisit that budget.
Yeah, we can, we can replace our stuff instead. I'm just thinking, we had a lot of requests to do sports this year and a lot of stuff going on at the high school, so that's where I'm coming from on it.
Anybody else? A question for Chris? Dan?
Mr. Chair. We live in a town with a regional school system. Once the new high school's built, it's not just the high school, it's a middle school, junior high, whatever you want to call it. It's seven through twelve. So, that encompasses half of the children to go to school from Groveland. So, if the other towns aren't going to contribute, and somehow we have exclusivity to it, and if they want to use it at some point in time, you could have the ability to lease, lease it to them or somehow get a contribution for the capital expenditures, then I would be supportive of it. Time is of the essence, and if they close the walls up, it just makes it more expensive.
Right.
If you want to kill a project, you make it more expensive, and then you kill it. So, if you have funds for it, I want to ask you, you want to hit your stabilization, how stable are you? What do you have for funds and stabilization? Is this going to hit the shallow watermark, or do you have adequate funds even after this project to continue forward with the cable?
I think we do have adequate funds. We'd be taking a portion of what's in there, but we just signed a new ten-year contract, and we're getting a hundred and fifty thousand in capital on that. In addition to increased PEG, we're going from, I think, three-point-five to five percent on the franchise fees, so I feel like it would replenish. We've let it built up, build up over the past several years. You know, we do have a bunch of stuff to replace, but I think that once we get on a schedule with that, we'd be in good shape. So, you know, to put it in perspective, we spent about a hundred and sixty-four thousand on doing this room and the room over at the fire station. So, I don't feel like it's an extravagant, you know, obviously, it's a lot. It sounds like a lot, but it would give us a lot more programming that I think people want to see, and if they don't, then we don't do it.
Chris, perhaps Rebecca has a handle on how much is in the
Sure.
The town accountant and I have provided Chris with printouts of the account for the last four to five years for him to take into consideration how they've chosen to spend that money in the project, so believe you're going to put forward an analysis of some sort?
Yeah, we have about three hundred thousand dollars in there, some, somewhere in that ballpark. So, my plan was to take fifty out of the remaining budget for this year, this fiscal year, which ends June thirtieth, and then a hundred thousand dollars from that stabilization. Would pay for the whole thing.
And what do we got coming in for next year?
So, we've got the capital payments, which I think is fifteen thousand quarterly. And then, we don't exactly know, because we haven't gone through a year of the new contract, but it'll be more than the last contract, because it's, we increased the franchise fee percentage. So, it should be more than we were getting before. But I don't, I don't know, because we haven't gone through a whole, we haven't even gone through a quarter of it. We just signed the new contract, right? So, I mean, I might have a better answer in three months on that, but
What's your timeframe on this? When does this have to be done, before they close things up there?
Ideally, soon, but if you guys want me to come back and, you know, see if we can still do it later after you've had time to digest it, I'm happy to do that. I'm not trying to rush this. It's just a situation we find ourselves in with where the building's at and, you know, everything else, so.
Has any thought been given to the Bagnell Elementary School to grab the, grab the other half of the student population from the town of Groveland?
I didn't think about putting equipment over there yet. That's something we could think about, but I thought the high school was a good place to start, especially because
With the gym and the auditorium?
Right.
So, if they had plays over their concerts, and if the elementary school kids had them over there, we'd grab that.
Right, yeah.
And one more thing, would this enable you to record remotely and save some man-hours and labor costs, if you could just record it just digitally and?
We are trying to make that a big component of the system. I mean, we would still need someone doing it from somewhere, but, yeah, that is something we've looked at on, with NDI technology. There's a lot of capability there if people have the right speeds to, to connect into it. We've, we've set up a lot of it's a lot more advanced of a system than even we put in here when we did this room. I'll say that.
And in terms of usage, I mean, I don't want to be stingy, but if Wes Newbury and Merrimack aren't going to, you know, contribute, and if is there any way you can make sure that we own it, or I have exclusive rights to it, and if they want to jump on board later, then they can
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
They can pony up and contribute some cash. It shouldn't be, we foot the bill and they get it for nothing. I mean, that doesn't seem fair
Right.
to anyone.
Yeah, no, that was what I had in mind, you know. If we bite the bullet and do it, then we would be getting the programming.
I think they'll follow, because once they hear, we have all the programming for the high school and the auditorium and plays and concerts, and they're going to want the programming.
Yeah. It's certainly a shared interest, you know, so.
Kathy, you got a follow-up?
Yes, I do. We've known that the school was going to be built for a while now, and this was just given to me this evening, last minute. Two thoughts on it. One, this would have to go out to bid, and second, I know that in the sound industry right now, getting people on board to install anything at the last minute is not easy and probably impossible. I would just move the table this. This is just too rushed. It's way too much money to just throw, throw at it right away. We don't even really know what we'd be getting for this. The equipment is being paid for by the ratepayers of Groveland. It would have to go out to bid. I question whether you could get a qualified installation person in there in time before this building is sealed up, given how few people are out there, because my son works in Life Sound, and he's out straight. They're flying him back and forth across the country, because they're so shorthanded.
Well, my understanding
Again, this should have come to us, if you really wanted to do something with this building project, once the building project passed, that would have been the time to bring this forward. This time, right now, is too late, in my opinion. It's financially, it's just throwing money away. It really is. I just think you may get something out of it, but it won't be done well, and it won't be done right, and that's my opinion, from what I know. And the way it should have happened is it should have been brought to us when we were negotiating the cable contract, when we were knew we were going to build a new high school. That's when we should have talked about all that. So, I think we should go back to the contract that we negotiated and the budget we put in it. We put a lot of time into that budget. There were things that we said we were going to do. And, and the money added up to what we asked for. So, all of a sudden now, we don't have to do that, or we have way too much money. If we have too much money, lower the cable rates, okay? That's my opinion.
Well, again, we would be utilizing what's left over from the old contract, not the new one. We already have that.
Even so, the pandemic, we weren't recording meetings like we've been recording. It's hard to find people to do anything. We're having to pay more and more for people. I wouldn't look at this money as something that we can just spend. I would look at it as, thank goodness, we're not broke in that account, because on the town side, we're in big trouble right now. And I just feel that this is an excessive amount of spending to do at the last minute in a building that's being finished up for opening this fall, right? I just, I just don't think you should rush through this. I think at a later time, if we want to work with the other two towns and everybody put in some of their cable fees and do something, I'm sure it can be done. All of these things can be done. It's never not able to be done. It's a little easier when it's being built, but this is us doing everything. This is Groveland giving all of its cable fees into the high school, and I just feel it's very rushed, and we should not do it.
That's fine. That, I mean, that's, again, I'm not saying we have to vote on it tonight. I literally wanted to know how people felt about it, so.
So, we don't have to vote tonight?
I just, yeah, I got a quick question here. Have you talked to the contractor, and like, I find it hard to believe we're spending that much money on a building, and they're not going to have conduits run, you know, for future stuff.
You'd be surprised. So, well They have a lot of the network cables, but they don't have SDI for video, and that really have SDI for video, and that really surprised me. I would have thought that would have been in there, too.
So my next part of that was, could we just pay, you know, a little bit of money and run the conduits for future if we wanted to wait? Or, you know, either way, I'm just throwing an idea out there.
Yeah, totally. We could explore putting wiring in to one or two, you know, to these locations and hold off entirely on the equipment. Is that something that would be more palatable?
What's the cost on that?
We think it's about $15,000. Again, it depends on where the control room would go.
Mr. Chair, I think that's a great point he raises, and that would solve the issue with the, you know, closing up the walls. So I'm ready to vote on it so we can move forward. Time is of the essence, and if it was an oversight or Ronda site, certainly they ought to have cable, you know, video in a $140 million high school. But if they didn't, then let's get it in there, and you have the money. So I make a motion to approve the minimum running the conduits.
Do you want to state an amount?
I defer to you, $15,000?
Yeah, that's what we're looking at, and if it's, you know, hopefully it'd be under that. If it's over that, I won't do it, you know.
And it's not going to be a waste of money, and I don't know how feasible it is. I mean, can you refund the stabilization money in the cable, to Kathy's point? I mean, could you send refund checks to everybody if there was a glut of cash over there? Because I don't think we can appropriate it to omnibus. Is that correct?
My understanding is we can say the amount we want spent at town meeting. And if we don't spend it, nothing happens to it, it just gets put back there. That's my understanding of it. I am not an accountant. That is my understanding. If, am I correct?
It offers like a special revenue fund. So the monies that are not used, so you must allocate up to a certain amount like a revolving fund, so you have a spending limit, and then whatever is not used stays in that account and carried over to the next fiscal year.
So is it possible with a warrant and a vote at town meeting that we could appropriate the excess funds in that revolving account towards any other line item within our budget? Could we raid the cookie jar? And there, I think we did something similar for the Bagnell Elementary School years ago. They had the summer school program, and we used the money for the planting and seed and the irrigation system over there. Not that I advocate for that, but is that feasible?
Well, there is a new law that DOR passed to protect cable money to only be spent on cable-related things. And they actually made it so specific that it created a big problem for PEG stations because they put the word "appropriate" in there. So that got interpreted as anything now needs to go through town meeting, whereas that wasn't the case before. So a lot of capital upgrades that stations wanted to do became, like, dependent on town meeting schedule and waiting for that.
Needs to be approved by the voters.
Right, yeah. So they are trying to change that tweak back so that PEG can use it more easily. But they did really clamp down on what you can use it for, like, you know, a town wanted to build an elevator with it, and that triggered a big case.
Couldn't use it to buy police cars or fire trucks?
No.
No?
No.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My motion's for $15,000 to run the wires before they close the walls up.
Are there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Motion and a second. Further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to just see the article. I mean, I'm looking for it here. Am I not number...
I would say, Mr. Chair, the only thing I would caution the board is that whether or not we have the authority to implement and add any additional infrastructure to the school building, and that we get proper sign-off from the regional school district that allows us to spend these monies in the school. I'm not sure if we can just put infrastructure in there without their approval.
Well, I could amend, friendly amendment to my own motion. Can I do that procedurally?
Go ahead.
Try to be friendly. Subject to compliance with all regulatory authorities.
Yeah, and I think they are on board. I've obviously been talking to the superintendent and the school committee.
Everything's got to be done within the boundaries of the law anyway.
They know about it. This isn't like some idea that I just came up with randomly.
Mr. Chairman, before the vote, I'd like to see the town warrant, to see what the article is that we're trying. We're trying to vote a vote that's going to change a vote that we already made on the town meeting warrant. So I'd like to take a look at the warrant. I wish that I'd had this sooner. This should have been sent out.
You know, I know in the past, the...
Yeah, just a second.
Cable TV money has been spent on other things. My feeling on that is it's paid for by the people that have Comcast, have cable TV.
Me, yeah.
And it's been used, it should be used for their benefit. So this is a good thing. In the past, the town has used it for items that had benefit of everybody and not just the people with the cable TV. And that's not what the purpose of the funds are. I don't think it is.
I found it, if I could. So we're already...
Well, go ahead. Don't interrupt. Go ahead.
Well, you just should be informed that we're already set up with an article that allows $250,000 to be expended under the direction of the Board of Selectmen. So I think tonight, he's raised the point, we need to find out from the school. You're interested in sending some wires run. I think you're in the investiga, you don't need to vote anything because we can always vote it if we decide that it's doable. But let's find out if it's doable, because the article's already set up. It doesn't have to be voted until we know exactly whether it can be done or not. We're allowing up to $250,000 to be expended under the direction of the Board of Selectmen to fund cable access services, supplies, and equipment for fiscal year 2023. So...
Rebecca, you want to work on that and get the okay from somebody at the school?
I can definitely work with Chris and talk to Dr. Brock Allen UNT if they would be a minimal...
I was just going to suggest that.
I think that'd be a great idea, Mr. Chair.
Excuse me?
But I think that's a great idea, Mr. Chair.
Just wanted to hear it again.
Thank you. So actually, we don't need to vote on it because it's already on a warrant article for the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I just want to make clear, I'm not trying to do this without a vote from you guys. I mean, I would want your support, obviously. I just want to make that abundantly clear.
Well, what's your point of clarity?
Point of clarity, the town meeting will approve your budget. So is this project a subset of that budget, or will you need additional funds from stabilization to make it happen? That's what I'm unclear on. Is it within the 268, 250? Because again, if you can spend 250, then you come before us and you...
Yeah, I mean, if that...
Approval. Is it within that 250?
Yeah.
Okay, so that it's kind of my moot point of redundant.
And if it makes sense to do, and we want to do it, we can. And if we pass, we don't lose anything.
I think it makes sense.
But we're set up to be in position. The reason this was a rush, the reason this appears to be a rush, obviously, it would have been great to do this six or seven months ago. You know, we did start looking at it only two months ago with the school building personnel and all of that. And that was a big question, is like, can we even get this on through the town meeting the way we need to do it to even make it happen? So once we found out that we can do that, then we could sort of proceed on trying to see if it was feasible. Because if the answer to that question was no, then not going to happen. So I'm rambling, sorry.
I'm going to be at the town meeting to explain the article.
Yeah.
Anybody else got anything? Well, there's a motion and a second. I'm not sure that we need it because we already have the article. Dan, you want to withdraw the motion? Or you want to go with it?
I'll draw it if you think you can work without it. I mean, I'm going to try to help you out here. I want it approved, and it's just, again, it's just, should I be surprised that they haven't run, you know, SDI cable there at a $140 million project? I mean...
That's what surprised me.
Why wouldn't they? They got a $400,000 tool shed there built over there. But it's just me. I'm sorry again, folks.
I would say the only thing we share, if I may, is just that that article is really only allowing for the spending of monies for fiscal year 2023. In the 2021 annual town meeting, a similar article was placed on the town meeting warrant, which is standard is that we, it does set that spending limit. So the Board of Selectmen has historically voted on projects up until that spending limit as proposed. So the article that we're referencing, Article 33, as part of the 2022 annual town meeting, is for spending up to 250 for fiscal year 23, starting July 1. So the monies that we have set aside, I believe, as Chris had said earlier, we have about $50,000 that is left as part of the monies allocated for FY '22 as part of that. And it was the same exact language that was used, so the Board of Selectmen will ultimately have to expend it under the direction of the Board of Selectmen. So they would have to give some type of direction as to how they would like the cable department to spend those funds. So I would advise that they might...
Thank you, Mr. Chair, to answer your question. I do not want to withdraw with that information. Thank you very much.
Then don't withdraw.
So if that $15,000's coming out of this year's budget, I move the question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I move the motion.
And there was a second?
$15,000 out of the current budget, not next year's.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter to me. I...
It's nothing but a timing difference.
Right.
Okay. There's a motion. There's a second. Any further discussion on...
Does the motion include that we have to make sure that the school is going to allow this to be done before we go out and buy this equipment? And we're only buying up to $15,000 at this time?
Yeah, well, again, I haven't done this in a vacuum. I've been talking to the school and the superintendent and the school committee, and they are on board with having this equipment there if we so choose to put it there. That's the question before us.
Dan, you want to just add that into the motion?
I make a motion to approve up to $15,000 for SDI cable to be installed in the Pentican Regional seven-through-12 school, AKA high school, subject to approval of the school district and any and all other compliance requirements.
Mike, you still second that one?
I'll second that.
Big second. Further discussion?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
I think that may also give a little bit more leverage to pulling the other two towns in.
Sure.
Because it started, we funded the first $15,000 to get the baseline in, and it gives you a little bit more to bargain with.
A clarification, our town administrator is going to make sure that we get the school's approval.
Going to be working with Chris on that.
Okay.
Anybody else? None. All in favor? unanimous? Thank you.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate your time. Common sense, I'm sorry. I can't help myself.
Next up is COA Program and Transportation Coordinator job reclassification. Rebecca, you can explain that one?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So essentially, we have a program and transportation coordinator that sits in the COA department. That person has been in that particular role for over 15 years now, and over the years, that position has taken on additional duties and additional tasks under that particular position. Specifically, within the last few years, with the transition from our former director into temporary director and now a full-time director, that particular position has filled the role of director in the interim. And again, those additional tasks and duties have been taken on by that individual, and therefore, this is not necessarily a new position. It's a position that has evolved over the years in that particular department. So we're just looking for a reclassification of the role, because the way that it's labeled now and the description as it has been labeled over the last 15 years is really inadequate to what the role is doing. So we're asking for a job reclassification of the program and transportation coordinator to be now the Council on Aging Assistant Director.
Okay. Somebody want to make a motion?
I make a motion to change, changing the job title and description to the Groveland Council on Aging Assistant Director. Will it include more hours, or is she already doing all the hours?
Doing all the hours.
That's what I thought.
So no changes in hours and no changes in pay or salary or wages. It's merely just a reclassification of the title, and the description is more adequate of the duties being performed.
Okay, this looks good. I'll make a motion for favorable action on the job, the new job reclassification and description for Groveland Council on Aging Assistant Director.
Is there a second on that?
I'll second that.
Second. Further discussion? Dan, you had something?
Yeah, just, was this done in, I guess, conjunction or cooperation with the Council on Aging? Or was it just a housekeeping matter, Rebecca?
It was initiated by the Council on Aging.
So they wanted it. It's necessary, and it needs to be...
Exactly. And part of the wage classification and compensation study that we're performing, one of the tasks that the departments are doing is really kind of analyzing their departments and each of the roles within those departments, and trying to make sure that they're reflective of what the individuals are actually performing. As we have small staffs, and they perform a lot of different roles, and as part of that exercise, this was brought to the Council on Aging, and they voted to put this forward. And I would definitely 100% agree based upon the responsibilities of that individual.
And you've reviewed this and everything within here. It's a lengthy list, and I can read, but I mean, I don't really know what the nitty-gritty of some of these things are. There's some acronyms in here. And so is everything within this, I guess, memo or list here within the scope of what they do, in your opinion?
Yes, I would agree.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Nothing. Well, we got a motion and a second. No further discussion. We'll take a vote. All in favor? unanimous? Thank you very much. Very well-qualified person. Next, review the lease for option for 46 Washington Street. And Mike, you're stepping up there, and you want to explain this one, Mike?
Yes. So Mike Dempsey, representing Groveland Community Preservation Committee. So in January, I provided your board with an update on the community preservation grant that was awarded to improve the historic mill building and grounds at 46 Washington Street. So in the interest of both promoting more business in town and also saving the town some money, I've been working to lease the first floor of the building out to a local artist as an art studio. So I believe you have a copy of the proposed lease to review, and so the lease has, the town council has approved leasing the building out, and this particular lease now is for a one-year period. It will cover all costs the town pays for insurance, heat, electricity for the building, which is vacant at this time, and it's going to end up saving the town about $5,000 per year. The lease is also subject to a change of occupancy permit to be issued by the building inspector. And this permit required some electrical work, structural inspection, improvements to that structure, accessibility, septic inspection, and heating system changes. And all of these required items are expected to be completed this month and a permit issued. So I'm not sure if some of you have been to the building. The building is the last standing former mill building left in town. The lease will enable the town to maintain the building until a feasibility study can be conducted to determine any future use of it, and perhaps further rehabilitation required. In addition to that, at this time, we'll also be supporting Arts in Groveland with the artists providing an art project for the town. This year, we will use the remaining CPA grant money under that grant to landscape the grounds and improve the overall look of the building and exterior yard. This request was brought forward by Kathy, and I thank her for the support on doing that. And so tonight, I'm just asking that you take a look at the lease, if you haven't done that already, and take a vote to sign it either tonight or at your next meeting. And I can answer any further... And I can answer any further questions.
Anybody got any questions for Mike?
I do.
Kathy?
Um, a couple of things just on the project in general. Are we going to clear the barbed wire and the stuff that's still behind the building? Or is that being done by a town department? The fencing that's behind the building?
Yes.
Is that, are, are we intending to use the CPA money to clear that? Are we waiting for one of our town departments to clear that? Do we know?
On the site right now, the water department has quite a few pieces of equipment.
Yeah.
Pipes, uh, hydrants. They're planning on removing all of that stuff.
Okay.
I'm not sure whether we will remove that fence around the rear part of the building. We kind of can make that decision.
Okay.
Uh, it's not really necessary anymore, but it is fully intact, so if, if it made sense to leave it there, we could leave it there.
Okay. And I, I was reading over the lease, and it said that the tenant could construct inside as he needed to, as long as it could be removed, but I was reading the old lease. Is that what's in the new lease as well?
Yes.
So, what are you envisioning that he would need, he or she would need to build inside there on that first floor?
Okay. So, he is only leasing the first floor, the ground floor of the building.
The one you walk into, right?
Yes, right.
Not the basement?
Yep, right. And he intends to, uh, isolate that from the basement, because that's what the building inspector is going to require.
Okay.
Uh, he doesn't intend to make a lot of improvements on the inside of the property, uh, mostly clean it up and use it as a, his art studio. He's interested in the building because it has the garage door out front, and he's working on a very large project, and so getting it in, that door is a good thing.
Oh, the door that's, okay, yeah.
Yeah, that big garage door that's in front.
Right, okay. Um, that sounds all right, and he's, he, he's not going to pay utilities, he's just going to give us some money which will help us pay the utilities on that building, is that?
He's, he's going to pay the heat.
Oh, he is going to pay the heat, okay.
Gas bill, but he's not going to pay the electric bill.
Okay, so we'll pay the electric, he pays the gas, and then he pays us some rent. Yep, sounds like a, a good use in keeping the building at least alive a little bit while we figure out what to do with it.
Right.
Yeah, sounds good.
Because we had to, so, the building inspector recommended that the building be kept at about fifty degrees.
Right.
And so, we had to pay the heat all winter, and nobody was in there.
Right. Okay. Sounds, sounds reasonable to me.
Anybody else? Uh, Mike, go ahead.
Just got a quick comment. Um, knowing that building, once they clean up everything out back, that fenced-in area, if they, whether they remove that or not, I mean, there's a huge steep cliff right there. Uh, I, I think that's like a safety issue, so something should probably be done if, if it's going to be attracting people and we got kids playing around down there, they could get seriously hurt, so.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you know the back right-hand corner where I'm talking.
Yeah, I know what you mean.
I'm just a suggestion, I think something should be done about that, because.
I did talk to Rennie, and he's going to do some work on that side, because the building inspector's asking for it to be done, some grading, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody else?
No.
Okay.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Where does it say that it paid the heat? Because if we're paying the electric bill, then why couldn't they put in some of those, you know, split units and have us foot the bill on the electricity and the air conditioning and everything else? I think it ought to be defined so that, uh, you know, our electric bill's not four-hundred and they're paying three-seventy-five.
It's on the second page?
Yeah.
If you read the second page, under Utilities and Services.
Landlord shall be responsible for electric and water utilities and services in connection with the premises for the term of the lease. Landlord, the town. Tenant shall be responsible for natural gas utilities and services in connection with the premises for the term of this lease. For what use? It doesn't say that they're to heat the building with natural gas, and I think they should, otherwise I'd put in electric systems in there and let the town pay the bill. That's just how my mind works. I just have you pay for the air conditioner, too. So, can we clarify that?
Sure, we can add.
Appreciate that.
Natural gas for heat.
Tenant responsible to heat building, not with electricity.
So you'll have that, you'll prepare that for, uh, for signing maybe next meeting?
Yes.
I also need to confirm the septic, and whether or not we title five.
Yes, so there, there, until the, the lease is based upon an occupancy permit, that is not going to be issued by the building inspector until the septic system is check, checked and signed off by the Board of Health. And there's a couple of the small things to do. So, it's, the, the whole lease is subject to that occupancy permit.
I don't think that's a small thing, that, I, that, that, the, the septic system there, my recollection, a fifty-five gallon drum in the ground.
No, it's not.
What is it?
I've already had Briscoe over there, and he found the septic system. It's, it's in the rear of the building. So, what he's going to do is he's going to come in, come in and excavate and locate the, uh, exact size of it, make sure that it fits with Board of Health requirements.
Okay. We want to, we take a vote?
Can we move favorable with the amendment from Selectman McDonald that the, the wording in, um, Utilities and Services, um, the tenant shall be responsible for using natural gas, heat, and paying the Utilities and Services in connection with that.
Okay, is there a second? Second. Any further discussion?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, I think it's a little premature to, to vote on it, just because we have to wait until we find out about the sewer.
Well, like I say, the lease is sub, if, if we don't get an occupancy permit, we can't, even if the lease is signed, we can't execute it.
Yeah, I understand. Well, there would be no point of voting it until it was approved. Because until it can happen, you know, I don't know that, uh, we can. I'm not sure I'm a fan, even if it, the wording is there, of not making the tenant responsible for the electric, because even if we say it, doesn't mean it will happen.
Well, the, the trouble with the electric is that he is leasing only that first floor, and there's significant lighting on the outside of the building, and it's all on one meter, so it's very difficult. We certainly should be still responsible for lighting the sides of the building, so it's difficult to have him pay for all of that, so that's why I kept it that way.
That I can understand. Go ahead. Go ahead.
Again, I mean, I don't want to belabor it, but what if he uses air conditioners and, you know, electric heaters? I mean, so it's some restriction on that, we, needs to be, if you can't separately meter it without another panel, and that's still a cost prohibitive, then, uh, somehow it needs to be defined that he's only to use the electricity for light, internal, internal lighting.
Yep.
And computers, and, but not heat or H, you know, air conditioning and things that are going to run that meter.
So I can add that, too, not heat or AC.
Mike, can I just interrupt you for a second? Jason, can you, can you help all with getting rid of that echo?
Do you hear an echo?
The, the echo when, um, when we're, we're speaking. Uh, thank you. I'm sorry, Mike, go ahead.
Yes, so I'll alter that paragraph to change it to no heat or AC.
Go ahead.
I mean, if they wanted air conditioning in there, it, it would certainly spike in, say, the month of July and August, and if they, if you can incorporate language in there that if they want the, is subject to approval.
Okay.
That they're going to pay the delta. I mean, your average light bill for floodlights and parking lights and whatnot.
Right.
It ought to be somewhat consistent. And if it goes up a hundred bucks, then it seems fair to me that if no one else is in the building, then, you know, the tenant would be agreeable to that, then they can have it with approval.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, Jason, go ahead.
What is the big project he's going to be doing?
It's some large, uh, sculpture, I believe.
So he's going to be working with saws, sanders? Is it metal?
Hmm, not metal. I, I don't know, I'm not sure if it's papier-mache, if it's plaster Paris, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Mike, you got anything?
Now, now that he says that, I mean, that, that becomes another insurance liability if he's welding and stuff, knowing that there's wood floors.
Yeah, he's going to have to carry insurance to protect the town.
And that was the other thing, too. We changed our insurance because, um, it is now a vacant building, so our insurance went down. So if, um, we do change that and have a, a, a lease or an occupancy of some sort, we will need to change our insurance, and there will be a six-hundred-dollar penalty.
Yeah, but that, we're going to pay for that out of CPA project, so that's not a problem.
Okay. Uh, anyone else?
I would appreciate a vote tonight, because I'm really worried about losing this tenant, because this has been starting back in October, so I, at, at least if we have a vote to sign it, and you haven't signed it tonight, but I can at least tell them things are progressing.
Is there, uh, there was a motion?
Kathy had a motion.
Yeah, we'll make the motion subject to, um, the use of the natural gas for heat and subject to the use of electricity for lighting only, really. Is that the only use you should have for lighting, for electricity? And we don't expect to see wind?
Computers.
Our computers, but, but not for heating and cooling purposes. Not for heating and cooling purposes.
Uh, Rebecca, could you help us out here? Was there already a motion on the floor? In a second?
One motion was a friendly amendment based upon the inclusion of language for natural gas.
Okay, we have to deal with that motion first. And that was, uh.
I'll withdraw that. Let's deal with the new motion, if that's all right, because I made the friendly amendment, and we can clarify that.
Okay.
So, Dan, did Dan make the original motion or not?
You did, I just chimed in.
I made the motion to approve it, and you chimed in. Okay, so, um, the Utilities and Services would read that the landlord shall be responsible for electric and water utilities and services in connection with the premises for the term of the lease. The tenant shall be responsible for the use of natural gas for heating and shall not use electrical services for heating or cooling purposes. In connection with the premises for the term of this lease.
Do you second that?
I'll second.
There's a motion, there's a second. Further discussion?
No.
None. All in favor? Uh, I'm, I'm going to have to abstain if, uh, the neighbor mind. Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
All in favor, one abstention.
Thank you.
Town Administrator time, Rebecca, you're up.
Yes, Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, so we had a couple of things, one being, we started the wage and classification orientation. Uh, the Collins Center came in last week, we sat down, they gave us a rundown of the survey that they're going to be performing in the process, in which we're going to be going about, um, the initial survey with follow-up interviews and then their end product and what they're expecting from this particular project. Also, to let the board know that the HVAC contract has been awarded, awarded, and the contractor has started to, um, begin work. Uh, there's a couple of issues that were a little unforeseen, but we're hoping that it won't affect the price at all. Um, and they're also hoping to finish the project by the end of June. And then, as you've seen, they're still, uh, in the process of making some office changes and doing some office moves. Uh, we're hoping that the water and sewer department will be moving shortly. Uh, once they do, we will start to, one by one, move the individual offices.
Okay. Anything else? That's it? Um, Selectman time, uh, what's that, Kathy, do you have anything?
Um, I thought it would be more under old business with respect to the, um, School Committee meeting tomorrow.
Okay. Um, Jason, you got anything?
No.
Mike? Dan?
Yeah, I have something.
Go ahead.
I looked at the budget, uh, item for, uh, the, um, the town audit. I think it's twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, I think periodically, we should put out bids for, to CPA firms and see if we can, uh, get something more favorable and a fresh set of eyes looking at our books and records and, uh, so, that's my idea. If we haven't engaged a, uh, signed an engagement letter for the next audit that we, um, solicit bids on it, maybe we could save a few bucks and, uh, gain some, uh, insight, too.
Okay. Um, you want to, uh, you want to put that on, uh, on an agenda item for, uh, after the town meeting?
Sure.
We can do that. Rebecca?
Rebecca, uh, what's that timeline on, uh, on, uh, contracting with a CPA firm?
I believe we may already be in a current contract with Towers and Sullivan. I'll have to double-check, but I know that they have their preliminary audit scheduled for the beginning or the second week in June. Um, so I'll have to see whether or not that's based upon our current contract or whether that's just the standard schedule. But I'll get that information for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Um, then I have nothing. Next. Next is older unfinished business. Kathy?
Yes, thank you. So the school committee is meeting tomorrow, um, and I felt that it was urgent. I drafted this, I gave Jason one, you can, I only have so many, I don't have any questions to that one, so here's my, other two copies. So, um, I did ask to be allowed to make a public comment at that meeting, and since they limit us into two minutes in public comment, I, I engaged both, uh, Ruth and Jason, if necessary, to make sure we can read a complete statement and not get cut off. Um, but this is my first pass at it. Um, I am getting input from people through email and, uh, reviewing notes from our meetings and trying to keep it succinct and yet, um, get across the message. So, um, with your permission, would you like me to read it right now? And this is a draft, obviously. Would you like me to read it or not?
Well, Jason, you had something?
You want her to read it or not?
Yeah, it seems like we just, we just got this tonight, and, uh, I don't know that we can even do, do a vote on it.
I don't think you, you need to, because I already requested to have time on the public comment, because I knew that you had to let them know by Friday. So, um, my statement is to the Honorable School Committee members, as you know, voters in Groveland overwhelmingly said no to the request for a tax override to fund the requested Pentucket school budget. Sixty percent of those voted, voting, seven hundred and twenty-seven voters voted no on the request to raise taxes to fund the school budget. In accordance with the clear message from this override the Groveland Board of Selectmen made on Wednesday, May fourth, and voted to post the Pentucket School Assessment on the annual town meeting warrant with a three percent increase in the operating budget over last year's assessment. I just paused, that's correct, right? Thank you. In order to balance the budget with this allocation for Pentucket, um, this is badly worded, I'll fix that. The following recommended cuts were also made from our town budgets. All stipends for appointed elected boards, clerical and administrative positions were cut, and is it all, should I say all or just say department expense budgets were reduced? All. All department expense budgets were reduced. Groveland posted on its annual town meeting warrant, the maximum allocation that the town can afford without incurring definite and severe hardship to human services, financial operations, town infrastructure, and the safety and well-being of its residents. At this time, the Groveland Board of Selectmen is informing the school committee, that I have to take out because you can't vote this, so maybe I'll just say, I'm going to bring it to you, that pursuant to Section twelve A dot six of the regional school agreement in the opinion of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Board, the regional school district budget as it currently exists will not fit within the budgetary capabilities of the town of Groveland, and we are requesting a special meeting to discuss the budget. So that's a section of our regional agreement that we haven't exercised our rights under at this time. So again, that you could comment on and have me take out if you're uncomfortable, or I can reword it. Prior to this meeting, we invite school committee members and Pentucket administration to review the attached spreadsheet, which shows how the change in the formula for the required minimum contribution adversely impacted Groveland's percentage share of the Pentucket budget, as well as the change in student percentages, which may be due in large part to the pandemic, and the impact of this sudden change on Groveland's percentage increase. In additions to these factors, it is also critical to note that the state officials committed financial assistance, assistance in the form of S R fund, S R two funds to both Groveland and Merrimack, and then later reversed this. and Merrimack, and then later reversed this division, decision after all annual town meetings had been concluded. This unprecedented takeback of $250,000 of ESER funds that were supposed to be used to fund last year's Groveland Penn Tucket assessment left the town with no other option than to go to its reserves and use stabilization funds to partially meet its obligation. While the town is appreciative of the effort that Penn Tucket made to lower the deficit from the initial $250,000 to $111,000, this compounded the structural deficit that was already well underway. Collaboration, transparency, and open sharing of information and ideas are critical towards finding solutions that will balance the town budget while ensuring the best possible services for all residents. Informal conversations between town and school officials, which seeks to place blame, are simply inflammatory and nonproductive. We ask for the Regional School Advisory Council to be immediately convened to ensure that communications between the school and the towns continue on an ongoing basis, even after this year's budget is resolved. Further, if at tonight's meeting, the school committee is unable to come to a majority vote on a budget, which can be funded within the budgetary constraints of all three Penn Tucket towns, then we respectfully request that the school committee postpone voting a new budget assessments for the district until after Groveland has had the opportunity to exercise its rights under the regional agreement for a special meeting, so that Groveland Administration, Board of Selectmen, and Finance Board may have the opportunity to fully present the current budgetary constraints. And of course, I said the usual, thank you for taking the time to listen to me. That's the gist of it. I've attached, I've been working on this for over a year, the analysis of these swings and percentages that, that do move a larger and higher percentage of the budget onto Groveland and Merrimack, you know, at a particularly difficult time. My goal is to, to try and work with them and talk with them and see how we can avoid massive layoffs on either side. It's not what I want. So, if you're totally opposed to it, I can revise this and just make it for me, and I'll just go with it, because I've already scheduled to appear.
So, you're gonna present this to the school committee?
Yes, I won't be able to say the Groveland Board of Selectmen, I'll have to just say Jason to me.
Well, I think we already voted that you were gonna be putting forth the letter and setting it up, so I think.
You think it's all right?
I think it's fine, because, I mean, it states pretty much what we talked about at our last meeting, about pushing this issue forward and doing what we could.
So, what it is, is I'm asking for that special meeting that's in the regional agreement, where two members from each of the town's school committee have to come, and, and we have to go, more importantly. And the school administration is there, and it will give us time to, to share our financial reserves and their financial reserves, and let's, let's talk about this to try to avoid causing any real harm in our schools or in our town.
Anybody else got any comments on this? Go ahead, Dan.
I do. I think if we do it as a letter from us, as a board, I think the letter states the facts succinctly. My only objection is the last paragraph on page one. I think it could be deemed as accusatory. I don't know that it adds anything to, I think it's understood that you just hit your box, oh, this is what we're trying to do, we're trying to compromise, we want a dialogue, we want a special meeting. We've made sacrifices, we, we get it, there's a structural deficit, but I don't know, they might ask you, who are you talking about, informal conversations, you know, inflammatory and nonproductive. I think if you strike that out, I'll support the letter, other than that, I'd...
I'd be willing to strike it out, as long as we all agree that an in-law apartment didn't cause this problem. You know, these, the thing, the thing that's driving this is twofold. It's like Jason said last week, it's the, the pullout of that $250,000 that was supposed to help us, and it was supposed to be that year and perhaps next year to help us catch up on this formula. And then they pulled the rug out from under us, so we didn't get a chance to meet with the school committee. And, and when you look at the changes in percentage, it may not look like a lot, but if you really look carefully at the student and the swing, you can see that is, I cut off the names of the towns again. When will I learn how to print this out? Rebecca's laughing. The first town is Groveland, then Merrimack, and, and then West Newbury. I'm so sorry, I thought I had it finally fixed, but I'll fix that again. So, the lower percentage, you can see that, you know, West Newbury was at 31% in FY19, now at 28%. Okay, the towns are Groveland, then Merrimack, then West Newbury, in that order. So, it's, it's a swing in both the student population, which affects us on all levels, and the capping of the minimum contribution, because they've determined that West Newbury is already paying enough. And speaking with Rebecca, one of her ideas is to work through the regional agreement, which is due for renewal, to see if we can remove this whole minimum contribution from the calculation, take it out of play, and then we just pay our straight pupils, which if you look FY23, our enrollment's 38%, and our minimum contribution's 38%. So, that would be easier for us to track as our student numbers than to worry about the state changing formulas on us, you know? If we can take that out of the agreement, that'd be a great success for our town administrator to do. I forgot how to print this right.
Comments, Dan?
Yeah, I mean, you know, Kathy and I may disagree on expansion of housing within town and, and relationships, but to Kathy's point, if you could take out that last paragraph, I would agree with you, if you would agree, that frank discussions on drivers of costs should be discussed openly at the meeting. What are, what are the driving, the drivers that are escalating the costs within the school budget? It can't just be their collective bargaining agreement with a 2% pay increase. So, if we offer three, you'd think we could pay for the additional school teachers. So, there has to be something else driving the cost up, and that ought to be laid out there for all of us to discuss.
Right.
If you don't want to talk about behind the scenes, you know, then someone's gonna talk about it openly, but some things, and, you know, I've thought about it, I reflected on the last meeting, and I've talked with a few people, special education needs to be discussed. And, and I don't think that special ed students are stigmatized like they used to be, and they shouldn't be stigmatized. I think we can openly discuss what the needs are of every student within the district, and I think there's a professional way to do that, to maintain sensitivity, where there's a need for sensitivity. But I think that needs to be addressed, and I think it's kind of the, the topic that people shy away from. And if it is a driver of the budget, then it needs to be put, you know, front and center. That's all I ask, Kathy.
Right.
I don't want to disrespect anybody in any way.
Thank you. If I could respond.
Yeah, go ahead, follow.
Thank you. So, I'll just take out the sentence that says informal conversations, because I think the rest of that, because we want that regional advisory committee, and we want to be open. And part of the conversation that, that I'm hoping will happen is about us talking about, you know, our free cash and our reserves, and why, how much we need to put aside, and what reserves we have to draw on, and the school also, and maybe along the way, if, if we need some help over the next few years, and they agree somehow to help us through their reserves, maybe we agree to help through our reserves. I'm not saying we'll be able to reach the amount that the override would have funded, but maybe we can reach an amount that, that holds the education to a standard. What concerned me at the school committee meeting was, there was no discussion of, well, what is the class size at the elementary level that we want to hold the line on, and what is it that we really can't afford to let go of? And I want, I want to know that, too, from the school, so that we can prepare for next year's budget. And part of, of us starting to work with the school is embracing the school budget as a town budget, and not as them versus us, but as all of us together, so that our kids can get, my kids got a good education, and I just want the same for other people's children in our town. And I just sense that we're at a standoff, and I don't want there to be a hasty vote that puts us at odds or, or puts our town in jeopardy.
Hey, anybody else? Do we want to vote on this to allow Kathy to go through? You said we had, we did vote before, so with the changes.
Right.
I don't think we made any vote on that. Thank you.
Okay.
Other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting? I don't think we had any.
I do have.
Oh, you do?
I have one, and then I meant to mention earlier, in the town administrator time, I just wanted to commend our fire department and our police department for their efforts this last past week. We had three fires that they attended to, one here in Groveland, one in West Newbury, and one in Haverhill, and they did a tremendous job responding to those with minimal impact to the residents and maintaining that fire quickly and efficiently. And then also, our police department also had two emergency situations that arose that definitely makes you very appreciative of their efforts and their sensitivity and, excuse me, their dedication to their jobs and protecting the citizens of Groveland. And then the other thing, or other items, is that the school building committee, we had Bill O'Neill appointed as our representative. They're meeting tomorrow. We don't have another representative, and so I was wondering if the board would like to either appoint myself or another board as well, remember, to fill that role and represent Groveland on the school building authority for the remainder of that time.
We should have someone, any suggestions?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint our town administrator, Rebecca Alden, to represent us on the school building.
The motion, is there a second?
I'll take a second. Any further discussion?
Do you want it?
Happy to help if I can.
Wow. You want it?
Yeah, of course.
We'll get some video wires in the walls over there.
One problem at a time.
When you ask about the $400,000 tools, you ought to have heard rumors of, I mean, you know, where'd the money come from? I've done.
I'm just moving to put her on the committee, she'll do what she thinks.
Well, with charges. The motion is a second, no further discussion?
With charges, I like it.
All in favor? In unanimous? Thank you. Correspondence, Lieutenant Dwight McDonald, resignation from reserve offices and dispatch. We also have from the commander of the American Legion, Post 248, an invitation for the members of the Board of Selectmen for the Memorial Day service on 26th of May at 6:30, and out here on the town hall, front lawn. And in clement weather, it'll be inside. We also have a, an invitation from the AMVETS for anybody wishing to march in the Memorial Day Parade in Haverhill, assemble at 9:45 on Canola Avenue, parade steps off at 10.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
So, Lieutenant Dwight McDonald is someone that I have known since I've lived in this town, and to me, he embodies absolutely the best of everything in any employee that I've ever known in town. He was an integral part of the police department, he worked his way up through the police department, was the dare officer at the Bagnell School, was a fantastic role model and provided guidance to my children as they went through the school system. Always professional, always willing to help, never said no, and just did above and beyond all the time. And difficult to find people to replace that, but it looks like our police department is coming together well with the new hires, and I just wish Lieutenant Dwight McDonald and his family a fond farewell, and we'll miss them a lot.
Yeah, I think everybody would echo the same comments.
Thank you.
Very, very cooperative. Good luck to him, he, he served the town of Groveland well. Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen will be Monday, May 23rd at 6 o'clock at the Bagnell School prior to the town meeting. Is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
You made the motion, you can't second it.
Oh, I was, I was, I didn't know if it beat me to the draw.
All right, with the motion and the second, all in favor? In unanimous. I guess you want to get out of here.